I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Doolh?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Here.
McManus?
Yes.
And Corn?
Here. All present accounted for. First item on our agenda today is public comment. Any member of the public who would care to address the board, could please step to the podium and be so kind as to give us your name and address? All right. I will close public comment, bring it back to the board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflict of interest. Any conflicts today? A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. We have an agenda. Next item is our consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes, March 12th, 2024, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $175,575.75, recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, developers escrow funds, stormwater reviews, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $11,667. General utilities, $2,740. Park funds, DNR trust fund, $405. And special assessment district, $360, for a total of $15,172, recommend approval. 2024 final March Board of Review Assessment Role Figures Report, receive and file. An introduction of Culver Meadows conditional rezoning and scheduled public hearing for April 23rd, 2024, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Or any member of the public? Or staff? And I would entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Doolh?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Item four is items removed from the consent calendar. We have none. Item five is correspondence, and we just received our rating from U of M's College of Business. And we got a five-star performance report, which is nice. We will go to reports. First item is our construction report.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet dated March 20th is our report. A lot of things continues to be worked on. Finally nailed DPW down to go through the Cedar Run Booster Station and get a bunch of comments from them as far as layout and arrangement. Because I'm still, we've been on hold with that project due to pricing and through some recent bid letting, we've definitely seen not an increase, not a decrease, but stabilization. So that's good. So we're planning on wanting to put that out for bid this summer. Stone Ridge PRV, you guys approved a contract low bid with Elmers, so we're working with them on contracts and shop drawings, some mittles. And with lead time on the station itself, most likely late summer installation is kind of the timeline that they're looking for, for delivery. Silver Lake Sewer Extension, that also is under contract with Molon and shop drawings, and they're slated actually to start April 8th. And I've been coordinating with the respective parties, and we do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled here at the township hall, I believe, on the 5th, to meet with contractor utility companies and go through that. Other items of interest on the water service expansion, south of town, at Supervisor Corn's request, we did submit, or I should say, I took liberty to submit to Senator Gary Peters. They were asking for appropriations and asking for funding for that project and to highlight the water benefits and customer base that that project would bring. So we're hopeful that we can continue to ask for supplemental funding for that project. River East Park Project, last board meeting, you guys did accept my letter of recommendation to work with the low bidder AJ's and to also pre-purchase the bathroom. So we're working with the vendor and preparing purchase order for the selection of the bathroom. I'll continue to work with staff on amenities and also working with AJ's on contracts and shop drawings to keep that moving ahead and hopefully get the bathroom sooner than later and anticipate the sheer construction yet. Or installation of the bathroom, I should say. Copper Ridge Trailhead, working with staff on the best locations to optimize parking with what we do have for locations. The Commons Trail, that's on your agenda later, and I can talk about it at that time. And then we got a lot of utility reviews, mainly in closeout phase. Windy Hills has sent their revised plans in for a fourth review. So that is taking some time on our end, but definitely we got a lot of projects that are working with contractors on closeout and just waiting for paperwork specific to beta. Ridges at 45, both Britton Developments, both Burmley Developments, and TCAP. The only other project review that's been submitted for permit at this time is Village at Garfield, which is the housing complex just north of the gas station on Hammond and Garfield, is in for permit. Otherwise, and then a couple stormwater reviews, but I will entertain any questions you guys have for me. Yes, sir.
One of the owners from Francisco's had called me, and I don't know if they had a number or just was asking a comment question, but they said if the price of the sewer came in above what they were allotted from ARPA funds, who's responsible for that? And I said, I don't know, but get ahold of your contacts that are working on this, and they should be able to answer that question.
I spoke to Adam Inman, I believe is the representative for that development, and explained to him it was the discretion and approval of this board to go through a lateral charge process, so any difference would be appropriated at the end of the project through that, what typically will work with your assessor, and those overages would be defined based on frontage is generally how we appropriate those. So that would be at the end of the project. And that's how it's been presented to this board this entire time. So I sent him a reminder memo that had been submitted to the board at the onset of this project, just to update him and...
Did the bids come, or did you get any bids on this, and did they come in above what was allotted?
They did, but not terrible.
Yeah.
If I recall, I want to say maybe 10%, 15% over our original cost estimate, which was considering the estimate was generated two years ago. That was pretty good. And we had two, now I can't, was it two bidders, Chuck? I think.
Yeah, maybe one.
Was it one bidder? Okay. But it wasn't substantially over.
Okay, thank you.
The price. So, nope, I shared that with Adam, so he was very happy to hear the news.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is the MMR report. And, well. We'll save that for next time. On to the county commissioners' report.
Go backwards.
Yeah. Brad Jewett, Vice Chair, Grand Traverse County Board Commissioners, District 4.
Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner, District 2.
Want to go first?
Yeah, we've just got a few things to go over. We did have a study session and a regular meeting since we've seen you last. One topic at the study session was we did go over the budget process that I think is going to be a really great and transparent way of showing how the county budget comes together and will really not rush us at the end of the year. So I think we all agreed that was a great change of pace. Really excited about the park department writing some really great grants for a few parks, especially one in District 2, the Conservation District, that will help with the installation of the Borman Ottawa Crossing Bridge there. So really excited about that. And also at the Vast Trailhead Park, they've also got a grant going.
Okay. Word today from the airport was they are getting close with the city and cherry festival in regards to agreement on the Blue Angels. So I would think based on the conversation probably in the next week or so here, we should have an update on that, but I think, I think both parties have finally come together after a little bit of...
Bickering.
...base in the public, I guess you would say about it. But, so I look forward to seeing what that resolution is. As Commissioner Flynn mentioned on the budget process, you know, a year ago, we were really fast-tracking the budget because of the fact of new software and everything like that, and everybody trying to figure out how to use it, especially our finance department. But starting here real soon, in the next couple of weeks, they, they have a rollout phase there to hand out to department heads and managers and elected officials and everything to get the ball rolling a little bit earlier and everything. So I think the, the process will be much smoother. And also, we, we discussed the administrative review. Typically in years past, at least since I've been there, it was up to the commissioners to do, to do the questionnaire and everything in regards to, to the administrator. And this year, it's going to be going out to the department heads, managers, and I do believe elected officials too, right?
Yes. No, it was just department heads and asking the certain questions to the department heads, then the commissioners will get that review back and then...
That's right. And so they're going to have a list of questions or anything. We had an ad hoc committee come up with those questions, and I don't recall what they are right now, but anyway, that's, we're going to try that process and see how that works and everything. And we'll still have a say. We'll probably still do a questionnaire too and everything, but as we tie that all together, we'll just see if that process is worthy of doing in another year or two, so.
I was on the ad hoc committee, the questions kind of cover how he is with staff and leadership with that rather than how he works with the board. So we kind of get a full, full picture review of what the administrator does for our county.
Then one other question is, actually Commissioner Flynn has on her notes here. There was a discussion last meeting in regards to wake, wakeboards or wakeboats? What are they called?
Boats.
Yeah, wakeboats, I think it was. We do have legal counsel looking into that. It looks like that there may be some possible conflicts with state law to where we, we may or may not be able to write an ordinance on that. So once legal counsel gets back with us on that, then we'll have a direction of which way we can go with that, so. But that's all I have.
That's all I have.
So if anybody has any questions or comments for us?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the software that they use in the building department that you guys said Garfield is the only one that has issues with, I heard eSpace pulled out and Metro's also pulled out of that building permit thing, so what's the county's plans now?
Well, honestly, this is the first I've heard of it.
That's the first I've heard of that. Well, I know what software, it's not the same software that does our financial management, it's different.
No, no.
But yeah, but I can...
Intergov.
Yeah, it's Intergov and Epic.
Yeah, so Intergov, so eSpace pulled out and Metro, I mean, everybody's having issues with it, wasn't just Garfield, like was mentioned before.
I will have to ask Chris Forsythe about that.
Yeah, so what's the plan for that now?
Yeah, like I said, I'll look into it because this is absolutely the first I've heard about it and everything, but we'll look into it, or both of us will look into it and report at the next meeting what we found out.
Sure, appreciate that, thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Well, like always, our contact information is on the county website, so feel free to reach out to us and...
Anytime.
We'll get back with you. Thank you.
Perfect. Next is the Grand Traverse County Road Commission report.
Good evening, commissioners. I just have some, some updates about what's happening with the road commission since we last spoke. The Engineering and Planning Commission is continuing to meet about the special assessment district we have, which has been a, I would say it's a problem, and we're, not only is the, our process weak, but we have really quite a bit higher prices to do the kind of projects that special assessments are. And our, our engineering department didn't, doesn't, there's not a statewide way to recognize that, and so they're working on a, our own cost evaluation process and how to proceed with giving estimates when townships bring these forth. Chuck has been involved with, with some of this with, with Blue Star and then with, was it Jefferson, the latest sort of, and, and we're working, we're trying to work through that.
And Redview Court.
Oh. Okay. We've got a couple signal projects completed, North Long Lake Road and Zimmerman was completed, and then they finished out here supposedly at Veterans and Garfield with the South Airport Road connections. Our working group on Bluff Road, which is not, but is, was, which is a concern to people around the county, met again on 3:15, and we've, we've narrowed the scope of the project. Jennifer's helped us quite a bit because she's Peninsula Township's engineer of record, and, and we've, we've re-scoped the project, and we've tried to apply for some grants, which I believe are in, and a potential for a loan project to pay for part of that, to see if we can't find a way to get the, the road reopened along Bluff. Internally, we have a new GIS specialist, and they've been working on coming up with ways to help the public, and there's, there's going to be some improvements on our website, to start SAD processes. And once, once the, once these things are obvious to people who want to come forward with them, it'll, you'll be able to identify the project, the scope of the project, bring it forward to the township, it'll come back to us, and then we'll have a, a much clearer way to let the township and the residents know of what the costs are going to be. It might be a little bit slower process than it's been in the past, but it's going to be more accurate, and that's been the problem with rising construction costs and the timeline between when people finally, when people say, hey, our road needs improvement, and they go through all the steps, by the time they get there, a lot of these things have been, it's been a long time period. And the cost estimates that would go into the concerned people are, are out of date by the time we get them. And then when you add the rising costs of construction, it's sort of been a boondoggle, and we're working to maybe identify that it's, the process is going to be longer, but it's going to be way more complete and thorough when, when it actually gets to the residents to say, we want a special assessment district, we're willing to pay for it, let's go through the motions of creating it, which Garfield has always been a, you know, a big, a big part of that, there's been quite a few of them done in here. Your board has been willing to work with the residents of the township, and we're going to try to clean up our part of it. And...
Thank you for that.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a problem, and, you know, we've, we've talked about how, you know, I'm not, the, the scope of the work that our roads need and the funding available to the road commission, they're at opposite ends of the spectrum. So we've done what we can, and the real local roads and subdivisions kind of fall on the people who use them, unfortunately. You guys have been a big help. We're trying to get our process so it works for the residents better. I'll take any concerns or comments?
Can I talk first?
Can you speak to that roadkill policy where there was a fight with the DNR where you didn't pick them up for various reasons? Where are you at with that? What is the policy of the road commission? And I ask because people, I've heard, wondered where that was at.
We are picking those things up again if they're in a major area and we're placing them in areas that shouldn't cause a lot of concern.
Denise?
When you're talking about this new way of doing things, that does not affect the things that are going in place right now, right?
It does not, Denise. We're just looking, kind of the past is the past, and we're really, the board members are, are looking forward.
So they're like, we just had the one done in Redview Court, that's going to stay the same and...
Yeah. The process probably would be this, the process is the process that exists now.
Because it's already been approved, correct?
Yeah.
And the residents know what the cost is going to be and...
Yeah, yeah, that, anything that's in, you know, in Blue Star, we've had the pre-construction meeting, and that's supposed to start April 8th. Those things are all, are set. It's just as new projects come forward, we're, we're reviewing that whole process.
Perfect, thank you.
Molly?
Yeah, Potter Road, the Potter-Garfield road intersection, what's the timeline on a roundabout there and what?
I don't think we have a, a Garfield and, do we have, we've got a Garfield and Three Mile intersection roundabout project. I think at Potter, we've just, I thought at Potter, we just, that's not, that side of town is not my strength, honestly, but it says we're replacing the advanced flash awarding signals. And I don't believe we have anything there. Those, those have sort of aged out, the solar stuff doesn't work as good as it used to, and we've, we've authorized a contract to replace that, and I don't believe we have a roundabout in the near future planned for that.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I think there was a...
Yeah.
State grant, a safety grant that was awarded.
We, we've applied, and some of the grants might be awarded, but, and those are 30, those could be 36 months out if that's, if the safety grant is, has actually been awarded on that.
So it might be two, three years?
Could, it could be.
If there is a grant.
But we have, we have authorized replacing the warning signals on it, so I think that's maybe for 12, 24 months, if there's something better. We're going to see those improvements now.
You're going to look at a Three Mile and, and Garfield?
Three Mile and Garfield, yes.
Roundabout. Will you have those drawings on your website so people can look at them?
That's a good question, and I'll ask.
Steve?
Isn't the deadlier intersection Potter and Garfield than Three Mile and Garfield? Isn't that where most of the fatalities have been?
They, there, there has been some there, yes. I, I don't have the traffic data, so I don't...
I guess I'm wondering why wouldn't the county focus on the deadlier intersection over a lesser fatal intersection? I mean, there's been a horde of people killed at Potter and Garfield. I don't understand why they would do an intersection that's not as deadly.
I will report to you on it in 30 days.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the supervisors' report. Got a call from Chet today. He has eight applicants so far. He said most of them are qualified and local. We're, obviously the application's open till the 23rd of April, so we should have a good sampling to choose from.
And then we'll get to see those names?
We will go through a process of whittling it down, and then some of them obviously want to keep their names out of the public until they make a decision based on the process.
Well, we have some expertise on the board as far as...
Yes.
People who have worked in that line of work, so it might be nice to be able to ask some questions in the community about the applicants, if possible.
Yeah. It's kind of similar to the process we went through at Metro for the new fire chief, where we had 44 people, and the consultants reduced it greatly just by the applications themselves. And then the personnel committee from Metro whittled it down to five, who went to the board, and then final two, another interview with the whole board.
Same kind of idea?
Something similar to that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Met with the Grand Traverse Economic Development Corporation and the Traverse Connect and the road commission and the townships on basically economic development and infrastructure. And it was a very lively conversation. We have, we have a lot more talking to do. We'll be meeting again. Met with the YMCA, they are interested in providing senior services, more of a community kind of feel for older people to come in and spend some time with the different generations who are there in the building. They've done it in other areas, and it's worked very well. It's, it'll be interesting.
Silver Sneakers, are they thinking about doing the Silver Sneakers program?
Something like that, yeah. Not exactly. I spent a lot of time talking with our friends from Blair Township and the folks from Silver Lake who are interested in regulating wakeboats. And it's, I think, a legitimate concern. They are very, very rough on a lake, on the shorelines. And in the case of Silver Lake where they've got a millfoil problem, you have to, if the millfoil gets broken up, it just reseeds, you know, reroutes and grows more. So it's a, there's a number of reasons that we would like to see this happen. We're going to, we looked at doing two different township ordinances, and then how would we do the enforcement? And it was just, it seemed like it would be better to do it as a single ordinance for the whole county. But it's, it's been pointed out, there may be some legal questions there, so we're waiting to hear.
On that, Silver Lake Association on their website had a map of where you could possibly do wakeboats.
Right.
And is that a DNR requirement for, because there's depth and 500 feet from the shoreline, and it's only about maybe a mile or a mile and a half? It's north of the Narrows and south of the island that's at the north, so it's not very big, but is that...
That is the recommendation from DNR, not a requirement.
Okay.
So the requirement would come in the form of an ordinance from either the township or the county. And we'll see how that rolls. They want a certain amount of distance from the shoreline, obviously, and they want to make sure that you're in at least, I believe it's 15 feet of water, though, or more. We've been working with our HVAC company on a new boiler, and they are also going to coordinate. We have a number of valves in our system that are not working properly, and they've been replacing them one at a time, which requires shutting valves, and while that boiler's out, they're just going to do the rest of the valves all at once. So it'll be much quicker and less expensive, and that's going to work out well. And we have a new, what do we call it, control panel for our EPS system coming in. That'll make a lot of noise for a couple of days, apparently.
Good job.
So we're looking forward to that. And our wall, our new wall and the creation of a new office in the planning department is underway. So we've, we're looking forward to that happening.
John.
And that's the supervisors' report, unless there are any other questions? All right. And we will move on to unfinished business. Item A is consideration of Resolution 2024-07T, creating a township manager position. You have the resolution in front of you, and I said I've talked to more people since then, and I have not had anybody say they thought it was a bad idea.
I have a question. In this resolution, we're not putting any wages in here?
The...
Because it's not in here?
We are going to establish a salary.
Okay.
And we can have that discussion right now, if it pleases the board.
I mean, should it not be put in the resolution? No?
I think we should work with a consultant, like you're talking about the salary for the manager, right?
Right.
I think we could set the manager's salary at a different date.
Okay.
When working with a consultant. Just because of conflicts of interest and everything, I think a third party should work with us to set that salary, and we have never had this position before, so.
Right.
Just to pick a number out of the air, I think we... Just to pick a number out of the air, I think would be a good idea.
I just was just wondering why it wasn't in there.
This is to establish the position, right, Chet?
Yeah. And Steve?
When we go to look for this, it has that we will begin the process of finding and hiring a professional manager. I'm assuming we is Garfield. Are we going to be using a professional firm, hiring firm?
That would be the intent, yes.
Can we add that verbiage in the resolution, that we will be looking into using a professional firm to hire, I don't know, hire the managers proper, but use it to find them?
Yeah. We're using a firm to find a new building official. We will definitely use a firm to find a new manager.
Okay. Do you think we need it in the resolution, or?
I don't think so. I think that's understood.
Kind of known.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-07T, creating a township manager position.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the resolution, creating a township manager position. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Dool?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Next item, seven B, is a resolution adopting township supervisor's salary and establishing the position as part-time. And here we've laid out the statutory duties of the supervisor. The remainder of the duties would be on the township manager, it's presumed, unless the board wishes to change that, which is always possible. The board is always in control. Molly?
So the numbers that we have here, is it, this has been your experience, that this is the amount of time that it takes, and, you know, so it's kind of a reflection on what your perception is of that supervisor's job? I mean, it is what we were all knowing was going to be the supervisor's job, but these numbers, to come up with twenty-two thousand, is it, is it because this is about what it takes you to do those?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Question. It came to me late this afternoon. Somebody had mentioned to me, and I didn't have time to look it up, but is there a statutory law that says the supervisor must work at least five hours a week?
I have not seen that, no.
And I didn't have time to go look, because I, it was like late in the day. But I'm wondering, if that's a case, then that completely messes up the structure at the bottom.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've read the Little Red Book from front to back, and I don't recall ever seeing a requirement for five hours a week.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I don't know. I'm just bringing it up. That's why I didn't know.
Okay. Chris, did you have a question?
No, just, sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, you can certainly change that from part-time to statutory required hours. And that way, it's covered whatever it's in statute, if you wanted to, just to get around his concern. I had heard that that might be the case, too, but I didn't have time to research it.
I've never heard of that.
Comment on that.
Shouldn't we?
Just, just because it gives an amount that's going to be paid a month and an amount for each meeting certainly does not mean that that is all that you're going to be spending time doing. You're going to study your board package. You're going to be doing other, other things that are, that are right here. So I would think you would have to do at least five hours a week. I mean, just as trustees, we do two, three, four hours a week if we're doing our job. So I'm not sure we need to change things around much.
So that, this was just my best attempt at, you know, putting a number on a fair salary for a supervisor. But I did, if you look, they're getting extra three thousand dollars for the statutory duties. The trustees get five-ten, so we're adding what the trustees get. And to me, that would include the time you guys spend to study and, you know, do all that, because that's your, that's your yearly salary right there. So they're getting what you guys get to do the meetings, plus they're getting these statutory duties kind of itemized out. And then per the board meetings that they go to, they'll get paid as well like you guys do.
I'm just saying, they would always spend more than five hours a week.
Oh, yes. Oh, I was thinking you were saying it was on here, but, okay, yeah. That's kind of what we thought, was like the trustees, you guys study and come to the meetings for that salary. So it just seemed fair to add that to the supervisors.
I still struggle with it a little bit being part-time. And I struggle a little bit with, we're increasing the cost to the township of about seventy to eighty thousand. And you add what we're looking at forecasting for a supervisor and what we're looking at adding to forecast for a manager. The health insurance is a wash, because the part-time supervisor doesn't get it, but the manager does. But then you've got the ten percent retirement plan, which you have to add on to both of those. So when I did the math, I think it's like seventy to eighty thousand more, but I'm, I don't know, I still, I'm hung up on not a part-time supervisor. I think when people call, they've always been used to calling the supervisor and talking to them, and the hours could be different than what's down on the bottom, but that's my opinion of this look.
Moving forward, let's say into 2025, if the, if the board in conversation with the supervisor says, "Hey, the workload has gotten huge because of all the activities that are going on," is there an opportunity for a collaboration board supervisor to say, "Hey, we, we think you could work full-time?" And the board could then adjust the salary accordingly with, you know, with the supervisor being willing to do that?
Board can increase the salary at any time.
Any hours?
Yeah, that's a...
Okay. So let's just...
But they cannot decrease it during the term unless
Okay.
it's agreed upon.
So I kind of agree with Chris, too, if we're finding out that even with a township manager, our supervisor needs to work a little bit more. We don't want to hold him to that twenty-two thousand dollars a year. You know, we want, we want him to do more.
Yeah.
So it can be increased? Okay.
Yeah, at the end of the day, as I said, the board is in charge.
Okay.
The ability to increase.
Okay.
You know, and just from my point of view, because I'm always careful in my decisions that I make, and it'd be nice if you had a crystal ball to predict what the outcome was, desired or undesired. So, you know, in my comfortable world, would have been like in 2023, we budgeted for twenty-four to have a manager. Granted, it would have been extra money, but that person could have worked with you, learned the tools of the trade, so to speak, learned what, actually what the needs are, what the role that person would be. And then going into this decision, it would be pretty simple. You know, we would know, hey, this is the wrong direction, or this is the right direction. So I like the fact that it gives us an opportunity, you know, to work with a supervisor if we do find out later on, we're so big, you know, that we need two people doing the work. Because you do find that some of the townships have greater than, you know, more than just a manager and a part-time supervisor. They may have an assistant manager or other administrative people to help out. So I just like the fact that, you know, if, if this board or another board decides, we need to add more, we can, yeah.
Okay, good. It's a great question. Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope. I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-06-T, a resolution adopting the township supervisor's salary and establishing the position as part-time.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any other questions or comments? All right. On the resolution to change the supervisor's salary and position, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Dool?
No.
And Schmuckel?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item A is introduction and discussion of a proposed workforce housing project. And...
Thank you all for your time this evening. My name's Will Bartlett, and I'm a principal at Keel Capital, along with my partner, Tom O'Hare, here tonight with Mac McCollum, who's our brownfield consultant for this project. I think most, if not all of you know Mac well from the Kmart brownfield process at Cherryland and probably a lot of other projects in, in past history.
I said that to the Hurst project.
Yeah, exactly. So before I dive into the particulars of this site and this project, I wanted to introduce myself and provide some detail on the new housing TIF component and the legislation that was passed in mid-2023. It's new legislation for all of us. So to start with me, I've been coming to Traverse City and Northern Michigan since 2013, from Milwaukee originally, which is where I live, but I married a Traverse City girl. My wife graduated from TC Central in 2007. We met while we were both in Washington DC. And while after that, you know, decade in DC, we moved back to Milwaukee. You know, we've decided that we like Milwaukee, but we like Northern Michigan better. And we're planning to, we're in the early stages of building a home here in Northern Michigan to move our family in summer 2025. My wife is a physician. She's a neurologist and has signed a contract to come back to Munson as they build out their neurological sciences program to better service the community. So she's really excited to, to join that team and the growth that Munson has had. I would say, you know, Heidi's passionate about medicine. I'm passionate about housing and alleviating some of the pressures that communities like Garfield Township and Grand Traverse County are experiencing. And, you know, that kind of takes us to the, this housing TIF legislation that was passed. I think in the apartment industry, you know, I, the industry looks at the, the different segments of the spectrum in three chunks, and it's really driven by who the renter is. Typically, we define that by how much the renter earns as a percentage of area median income or AMI. So on the low end of the spectrum, you have housing that's partially financed by low-income housing tax credits, where there are often pilot programs in place. That's typically for a resident that's earning zero to sixty percent of area median income. And that renter typically, in addition to having the building being rent restricted, they're often receiving vouchers, housing vouchers to partially pay for their rent, and in most cases are either unemployed, obviously zero percent of AMI, or underemployed. And, you know, not saying it's a bad thing one way or another, but are typically higher consumers of public services. I would say the next segment of, of the spectrum is, you know, workforce housing, people that are typically in that seventy percent to one-hundred-twenty percent of AMI or area median income. And, you know, those are the core people that really power our communities. It's township employees, it's firefighters, nurses, et cetera, teachers. And that group, and I think the state legislature recognized this, has been overlooked historically in terms of, you know, funding for housing. There's a lot of focus on the zero to sixty percent, but historically not a ton on the workforce component. And that is one of the things that this housing TIF legislation changed. As part of that program, there are a bunch of elements. It's still going through the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority, still the same processes that you went through with the Kmart, but really, the difference is that housing activities are eligible activities for, for this program. And the increment that's created by new development, the incremental taxes, can be used to help finance the housing development and take a project that, in this arena with high construction costs and higher interest rates, is not economically viable. It, it can make it economically viable. And that's really what our project, you know, it doesn't make sense without the housing TIF. And from a financial perspective, it, it does make sense with it. So before I go into the project particulars, are there any questions on the new housing TIF legislation or, or anything I've said to this point? Okay. Well, flipping to the conceptual site plan from some of the slides in, in your packet, you can see that we've worked with Gosling Zuback to lay out the preliminary plan here. And I would say, from a high level, it's a nineteen-acre site, you know, just south of Sam's Club. Hopefully, you're, you're familiar with the site on the west side of Thirty-One. You know, a lot of positives to the site in terms of direct access to Thirty-One, the regional employment drivers, recreation drivers, et cetera. Some of the challenges of the site is primarily, you know, there's some environmental remediation that will need to be done, because there's a former orchard there, but, you know, in this neck of the woods, we're pretty used to that. But it's mostly based off of topography and wetlands. The site is nineteen acres in total, but when you look at the upland component of the site, it's really only six to seven acres in the middle of the site, which makes it a more complex development process. Complexity adds cost, and, you know, that, that's why we're in part asking for the, the support to make this, to make this a reality. If you look at the buildings one and two on the site plan that are nearest to the access to Thirty-One, those are conceptualized as two-story buildings. Buildings three and four are three-story buildings. We provided some detail on, each building has the same footprint, and, you know, the, each footprint has the same unit layout, which you'll find on the next page. But it's a mix of studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments, and two-bedroom apartments. So, and I think this will cater to a, you know, a number of different renter cohorts, from people that are just starting out, singles in their first, you know, professional job, to dual-income, no kids, young families, maybe even people downsizing from a single-family detached home in, in the area. As Mr. Dool's looking at the map, I should have mentioned, this is currently zoned R3. So multifamily is allowed with a special use permit process, and we're working with Mr. Syke to, to start that process. In terms of some of the finishes and amenities, we, we laid them out in the presentation and then provided some conceptual elevations for what this product will look like. I would say, partially because it's right across Thirty-One, this product will look and feel a lot like Chelsea Park West, which, you know, as we get to the financing details, that's why we based our rents, based off the Chelsea Park West rents today. And I think it'll, you'll have a similar renter cohort. And so, you know, if you want to think of us as the closest comp, I would say Chelsea Park West. Any questions on the, you know, high-level project, the site, design, layout, et cetera, before talking some math?
Thank you.
I'm going to flip to the project financials section of the presentation. We've worked in a collaborative process with Ann Jamison-Urena from the, the Brownship Redevelopment Authority, as well as had some conversations with Mr. Corn and Mr. Syke, and, you know, been very transparent in terms of our financial model and demonstrating a need. As I mentioned, we based our rents on what is being achieved at Chelsea Park West, and you can see our assumptions on the, on the slide titled Project Unit Rents. You know, when you compare us to Chelsea Park West, our, our unit sizes are smaller on average. So that what we refer to as chunk rent, or the monthly dollar rent that a resident pays, we're going to be... will be slightly lower. But our rent per square foot on a monthly basis is going to be slightly higher, at just over $2 per square foot. So in order to run through the process for the housing TIF, there's a calculation of the maximum TIF that a project would be eligible for, and that's, the backup to that is shown on the slide labeled "Potential Rent Loss calculation." And so when you compare the rents that we're projecting to the control rents, which are set at 100% of AMI, that would imply a maximum TIF for this project based on the rent loss calculation of 15.5 million. And if you, the next couple pages demonstrate the max that we could, I mean, we could request by the parameters of this program is 15.5 million, but what we're requesting is a total of 7.9 million over a 20-year period. And that's essentially reimbursing a portion of the incremental taxes, like other brownfield projects, the incremental taxes that would be generated by this new development, capturing those, and that is essentially refunded to the development on an annual basis. So the 20-year forecast pages detail what the project looks like without that TIF reimbursement, which is the third line in revenue for each year. And so on the first page, you can see the 20-year forecast without TIF. One of the things that is kind of a go-no-go in terms of whether a project can get financing or not, you need to get a construction loan, and you need to raise equity for the project that generates a sufficient return. And in terms of going to get a construction loan, typically the banks like to see a 1.3x debt service coverage ratio. And what that means is for every dollar of mortgage payment that you're responsible for, the project is responsible for per that loan, they want to see a dollar and 30 cents of income generated in the project's pro forma. And the bank builds in that 30% cushion for a margin of safety. So the bank is going to look at the project, and if the project is below a 1.3x coverage ratio, they're just not going to make the loan. And the project's not going to be able to go. And so you can see that here, we're barely above a 1x ratio and candidly just not financeable, really. When you add back on the next page, when you look at the 20-year forecast with the tax increment financing, you can see that we do hit that 1.3x ratio. And then, one thing we wanted to highlight is, and the reason we sized our request the way we did, is that in that last year, in 2046, you'll see that the TIF reimbursement line goes away and goes to zero, and we're back at 1.32x on the debt service coverage ratio. And so it's kind of fast-forward 20 years. At that point, the project can sustain itself without a reimbursement of the increment. So before I get into millages and that, any questions on everything I just said? Okay. The last piece, the last real slide in the presentation is looking at the state and local revenue increases, or the portion of the increment. I think one thing in particular is the total millage for this property would be 43 mills approximately. And with the brownfield program, there are certain categories that can be captured, and there are certain categories that can't be captured. And so the nice thing of this program is 100% of the state tax dollars are captured, and then about 60% of the local tax dollars are captured. And so if this project were to go forward, you'd still be receiving incremental tax dollars that were not recycled back to the project. And the millages that are not capturable locally are those that are related to debt. So you'll see the TCAPS millage is not capturable, the Rec Authority debt is not capturable, and then the fire mills are not capturable. So in the end, this would dictate over that 20-year period that the township would see an additional $1.2 million in tax revenue. And then, once the TIF program burned off, the township would be receiving another, call it $150,000 every year in tax revenue. And we'd be paying our full tax bill in, I think it's 2046, including the state portion. So that is all I had on the math piece. I know I threw a lot at you, but happy to answer any questions on any portion of the presentation.
So this is kind of a new thing, I think, for all of us, and I think this is the first one that will be in Grand Traverse County, is that correct? So I guess with talking with our planner, he brought up a valid concern, and that's, what happens during the life of this project to guarantee that those rents will stay that lower amount? Because with a pilt, we can revoke a pilt. Who's monitoring this to make sure over the life of the brownfield that the rents are staying reasonable? And then, I guess, are the rents supposed to stay low after? Or are you expecting to put them back up, raise them up to a higher market rent or rate? Or can you answer to how we monitor that, and are there any considerations for that?
So the nice thing is, this is a new aspect to a program, but it has the same base pieces of the standard brownfield program. And so in terms of the rent reporting, that's an annual process that we go through with MISHDA, the State Housing Development Authority. And so in order to get that reimbursement of the tax revenues, we have to have them verify our rent rule and report rents. And so if, I think the county has determined that 100% is going to be the barometer. If we go above 100%, we will have our reimbursement of those tax revenues lessened through the MISHDA process.
Okay.
In terms of what the status will be in 2047, the rents here are candidly set to a market rate. So I think the purpose of this program, at least as it pertains to this project, I think is really to cap total runaway rents. Let's assume there's, can it continue to be crazy growth in the Grand Traverse County and the township here? There is a cap put on it that may suppress it. But really, we set our rents based on what's being achieved at Chelsea Park West, which is not a rent-capped project. And we think these are the rents, the rents that we showed in this presentation, we think are the rents that we will achieve whether or not there would be this MISHDA component to it. So I would imagine that as area median income probably continues to grow, our rents will probably grow proportionally, and we'll still be under that 100% level.
Okay.
Is the 30% figure still the guide? So 30% of the rent, 30% of their income is what the maximum they would pay in rent?
Yeah, so MISHDA and HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, sets the tables by county. I think it's by County Mag, right? And it breaks it up by bedrooms. So studio apartments, and there's a table that says 10% of AMI down to probably 200. But there are certain levels, and that level is determined by area median income for that particular area. And then, as Chuck mentioned, having rent set at 30% of someone's income as a cap. Above 30%, the guidance is, if you're paying more than 30% of your income towards shelter, we would call you rent burdened or rent constrained, starts to weigh on your overall finances.
Everybody's trying to hire people who can't afford to find a place to live.
Right.
This gives them that place where it's 30% of their income. And it requires some help.
Right.
Can you talk about, like you mentioned, the TCAPS, Rec Authority debt, and fire, captured or not captured? What are you meaning by captured or not captured?
Sure. So let's say, a simple example, let's say the base taxes for a property are $1,000 vacant piece of land. You develop a building on it, and the tax bill goes to $10,000. That $9,000 difference is what we would refer to as the increment. And of that $9,000, a portion of that is capturable and a portion is not. So most of it is capturable. The non-capturable portions are the TCAPS, the Rec Authority, and the Metro Fire. So what that effectively means is those non-capturable mills go to the local unit of government and don't get reimbursed back to us. So essentially, if we create $9,000 of increment, we don't get $9,000 back, we get like $7,500 back. Because that $1,500 is applicable to TCAPS and Metro Fire.
Okay, okay.
So TCAPS bond millage can't be captured?
Correct.
Our fire fund can't be captured? So that keeps us whole in that regard, and the school system as well. The benefit of this program is it allows them to capture the 18 mills state education tax. So the state is the biggest contributor. Is that correct?
Yep. About 60% to 65%, I think, of the total tax bill goes to the state, and so all of that is captured. And so the majority of our reimbursement dollars are coming from the state, as opposed to, about 70% to 75% of the dollars are coming from the state, as opposed to recycling our property taxes to the locale.
Okay.
Now, to say that 40% balance, a portion of that is township, also county, the other taxing jurisdictions.
He's wanting you to go on.
Little tiny bit.
He's wanting him to go up to the mic.
If you could, use the mic.
Mac McCollum, I just wanted to make a quick point, that most of those dollars are coming from the state, but the 40% that's the balance is split between the township and the county and the other taxing jurisdictions as well. So the township is leveraging 70%, 80% of outside dollars to help support a project within the township.
I think this is a wonderful idea.
I think the, go ahead, Chloe.
Just about the process, so this was just to introduce the project to us, you still have to get approval from the brownfield authority, and then, like, the county has to vote on it, and then it would come back to us to approve? Is that how it works?
And the planning commission.
Okay, oh, okay. But do you need the funding first before you would take it to the planning commission?
I think we'd look to put forward a dual pass of the steps, and Mac, please correct me if I'm wrong. So the idea for tonight's meeting was to introduce the concept to the board, and then we would come back on April 23, hopefully to get a resolution approving this from the township board. We would then go to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, April 25, I believe it is, and then look to go, if we're successful in all of those steps, look to go to the county board in May. As a separate process, this is zoned R3, which you can do multifamily in R3 with a special use permit. So that is what Chuck was saying, we have to run a process through the planning commission.
So three legs on the stool.
Yeah.
One more thing, sorry.
Yeah.
And then, I had also heard that possibly included with this project, the PRV that we need in that area might be included, is that?
Yeah, there's been some conversation as recently as today. I think we want to be team players, and if you need a piece of infrastructure on the site. And the most recent conversation with John and Jennifer was that not necessarily something to put in our site plan right now, but they were looking into having an easement for some upland area on our site for a potential future PRV, which I forwarded an email to Gosling Zuback today to start to take a look at.
Okay. That's a benefit to us, too.
A percentage of that cost of that would be included, and if they can provide a site that gives us a little more elevation, it'll give us better water pressure throughout that district.
Yep.
That's it for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of a proposal from Gordy Frazier for engineering services for Grand Traverse Commons North Trail Loop.
Oh, that's me, she says.
Well, I don't want to take all the kudos for it, because it was an effort on behalf of the planning department. But as everyone knows, and congratulations, you guys received a trust fund grant for this trail. And so correspondingly with this project, to keep on schedule, what you have in your packet is a proposal from Gordy Frazier to assist with the extension of the trail. On the very back of it, just kind of provides a conceptual illustration as to, spatially you guys can see where we're going to take off from the North Long Lake trailhead, and then continue to navigate northeast, and then back south to tie into the existing trail. So I think it's going to be a great amenity on that site. To elaborate, I know there has been continual efforts. GFA helped with some boundary and survey work related to the overall parcel as a whole. So we've got a lot of background research that's already been done, related to identifying easements and some constraints. ECT, you guys retain the services of them to do wetland delineation, so we have all those shape files to incorporate into this concept drawing. And so that's all going to be very crucial to put the pieces together, basically to help us define the trail route. Right now, what's shown is just conceptual, working with staff on, but knowing now where the wetland falls is going to help dictate where that trail route ultimately goes. So I am happy to entertain any questions you guys have on it, or Mr. Syke is also obviously here to answer any questions as well.
I just had one quick question. Over by North Long Lake Road, there's a trail off the main trail heading to the road, is that going, where is that going to?
What did we put that leg in for, John?
That's kind of conceptual at this point, to at some point connect to the trail that's on the other side of North Long Lake Road. There's a trail that goes behind the Olsons, goes up to Cedar Run.
Yep.
And the goal is ultimately to connect up to Hickory Hills and that area. So it's kind of just there as a potential placeholder. There's not an approved crossing yet there. TART did have some conversations with the road commission about the possibility of putting a crossing there, and the road commission was okay with that. But we don't anticipate that necessarily to be part of this project, to actually construct that crossing.
Because I know at the Joint Rec Authority, they've been talking about the connector from the, they call them the Hickories, down through and probably behind the Olson complex into this trail network, which then links it to a whole bunch of stuff from here. And I wondered if that's what that was for.
This isn't really the challenge to that project, it's really going north of Cedar Run up to Hickory Hills. That's going to be the challenge in terms of, there's no real defined route. But this is an attempt to kind of connect these trails together.
And I guess it's, yeah, it's important to note, I mean, with the topography and everything, yes. I mean, people are out there walking it anyway, but to actually have a defined trail, work with ADA compliance, that's important for all of us, and very consistent with your five-year park and rec plan and the vision of this board. So, no, I'm just happy to be part of the process, so thank you.
Thanks.
We're looking for a motion.
What kind of motion does it want?
To award the engineering contract.
Okay, I make a motion that we award the engineering contract to Gordy Frazier. Okay, I make a motion that we award the engineering contract to Gordy Frazier and Associates for a total of $77,500.
Support. We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmucker?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Last item under new business is consideration to bid waste management services as a single hauler for the township. We've talked about this in the past, and I'd like to revisit it. I know that a number of us entered into different arrangements for waste hauling, 12 years ago or so.
Yeah.
You know, we are, our original preferred vendor was $12 a month, and they kept it there for quite a while. And then with the change of ownership, we've seen a rapid acceleration in the rates. The city, on the other hand, went with a single hauler contract, and they were at $12, and now they're up to, I believe, $12.45.
Wow.
So my, I, I appreciate people having a choice, but I also appreciate having less big vehicles on township, and particularly subdivision roads where we know that the residents themselves are responsible for maintaining them and the cost. So if the board sees fit, I would like to begin the process of bidding that as a single hauler.
Definitely.
Definitely.
100%.
Please.
Molly?
Yeah, are, are we thinking about a long-term, like a 10-year contract, the same as the city has, that, that type of thing?
The city had a five-year contract.
It says 10-year here.
10-year contract.
Okay, excuse me, right, five-year were the, was the extension.
Yeah. So we're looking at kind of a long-term deal, is that?
That would be the intent, yes.
Great.
So would a, one company hauler exempt any others from hauling garbage out of the township?
From residences.
From residences.
Not necessarily from businesses.
Okay.
So in, within the city, there are a number of people who operate with businesses, but residential is all GFL.
Okay.
How would we enforce that?
If somebody is running another truck in one of the residential areas, we write them a, we issue a warning and then a citation.
Same way, yeah.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And we're allowed to do that? I mean, we're allowed to specifically pick one and say the rest are exempt?
We are allowed to award a contract to one, yes.
Okay, okay.
Can we make sure we look at, like, the recycling services, does that cost more? Picking up, I think, GFL, like, once a month, you can call them and they'll haul away a bed mattress.
Right.
So just, you know, it's not just what you pay a month, it's all those other things. I just want to make sure we look at all that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's, the city has that now, as, as their...
I know mine, right now, I have both recycle and trash, and then all I have to do is call, and I'm with GFL, and they, they pick it up with no charge, so.
It's included.
It's included.
Yeah, just want to make sure you're not going to the lowest and be like, oh, all these other services, we could have got for free for a dollar more a month, you know?
Right.
Yeah, well, we will put together, together a request for quotations, and we will share that with the board at our next meeting.
Perfect, great.
That brings us back to public comment.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, do we need a motion?
You're gonna just start exploring.
He's just gonna start exploring.
Start exploring, okay.
Yeah, I hear no objections, so we'll start the, start the process.
Would you, are you gonna see, too, with this, if, if they take on commercial businesses in the township, what rates they would give them, being they're here? So that we're not leaving our commercial people at those high rates? Because I know my farm pays a lot more than my house. They consider that a commercial business. I consider it an ag business, which is not even close to a commercial business. But I mean, if we could, if you could ask them that, Chuck, and see if they, if our businesses use them for their services, would they give them a better rate, being they're here?
I can, we can put that in there as a suggestion.
That's gonna ask a lot there, but...
But I think it's...
If you don't ask, you don't know.
Right. And I think businesses have the ability to go out and bid their service on a regular basis.
Yeah.
All right. Now then, public comment.
Brad Jewett, 1745 Northwest Silver Lake Road, and I am not speaking as a commissioner, I am speaking as a private citizen. I would urge you to do your homework on the single waste hauler deal, because every week this county produces X number of tons of garbage. It takes X number of trucks to haul that garbage. It doesn't matter if it's one company, two companies, or three companies, so I would urge you to do your homework. Now, it could possibly eliminate trucks on different days of the week in subdivisions or residential areas, as you had just mentioned and everything, but bottom line is, it still takes X number of trucks to remove X number of tons of garbage every week. Thanks.
Good point.
Anyone else for public comment? Any other business to come before the board today?
We get to see everybody tomorrow night.
Yeah.
I just update them on website stuff.
If there was a coming attractions for future meeting?
Certainly. You want to do that, or should we let John do it?
You know, he's been doing such a great job leading the effort, I think.
You want me to report on the committee?
Yeah, you've been doing great, we appreciate all the hard work.
So the branding and website design committee has been meeting. We received, after the proposal was issued, we received 35 proposals for doing website and updating the branding for the township. And the committee's gone through and narrowed it down to four vendors. And actually, yesterday afternoon, we met with all four of those vendors, and I think we got it down to two. And we're just gonna do one more follow-up meeting right before the joint meeting tomorrow afternoon. And we'll probably have a preferred recommendation for your April, your first meeting in April there. So we've, I think we've got some very good vendor opportunities, we just want to make sure what's the best fit for us in getting the services and our expectations met through the process. So committee's been very good in putting a lot of time and effort into it, so it's worked out very well.
Great.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Thanks, John.
Any other business to come before the board? And if there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.